Good morning, everyone. We have a busy morning. So Jasmine, would you like to take the roll call?
Tim Dean, Mark Doyle.
Present.
Kathy Bauer.
Here.
Amy Bondeary.
She's muted.
She's waving. Jamie Piccone.
Here.
Don Sagliano.
Yes.
Al Tua-Johnny.
Here.
Okay, great. And so are there any conflict of interest disclosures? I know Tim is out for One Creek, One Creek Drive. And the.
So Tim is out, actually, his conflict is with, he's not present today, but his conflict is with Asahi Shuza and One Duchess.
Thank you. I had it the wrong way. It's actually the wrong way around.
And then I believe Amy, correct me if I'm wrong, you have a conflict with One Duchess?
Correct.
And Al has a, and Amy, if you can state what your conflict, why you have a conflict with One Duchess?
Me?
My office does work with them for that project.
Okay. All right.
Does work with them.
Okay. And then Al, you have a conflict with Asahi Shuza? Because they're located in Hyde Park?
Yes, yes, I would.
Excellent. And that's it then for conflicts. And there was a proof of meeting notice. Thank you. All right, so we'll take a look at the minutes. Jasmine had a chance to go through them. And if so, is there anybody to make a motion? Should we just do a motion for both together?
I'll make a motion, approve the minutes in a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Al. All in favor, will you take a roll call piece for the?
Mark Doyle.
In favor.
Kathy Bauer.
Approved.
Amy Bondeary.
Approved.
Amy Piccone.
Approved.
Don Sagliano.
Approved.
Al Tua-Johnny.
Approved.
Thank you. So the financial reports, Jane?
Yes. Looking at the balance sheet, we have cash of 2.7 million. Nothing really else stands out on the balance sheet. The P and L, we have total income of 1.4 million to total expenses of 1.6 million for a net income, or loss rather, of 194,000 to a budget of 259,000. The income without the pilot payments, we received 1.4 million in pilot payments and paid them out. It's 24,000 in total income and 218,000 in total expenses. Same net loss, 194. Any questions?
What was the payment of 212,500 in professional service contracts? I'm sorry, this is Don Sagliano.
Yeah, that was the tourism.
Yeah.
Okay.
That was a couple of months ago.
Well, but it's just appearing in Q1 here, so.
Right. It was the first half.
Thank you.
Good. All right. So any reports to committees?
No reports.
And unfinished business?
No unfinished business.
So on new business, we have three items. And the first is the 2328 Creek Drive consideration for approval. And do you want to lead that off with where we stand?
Sure.
See if there are any questions.
Yes. So 2328 Creek Drive is here this morning. And we have this morning Rodney Weber and Tim Barsaka here representing the project. They are asking for an increase in their sales tax benefit as well as an extension of the time of the benefit to complete their project at 2328 Creek Drive in the city of Beacon. A public hearing was held yesterday afternoon. We had one person from the public attend, who was the city manager of Beacon. And we also received two written comments from the public, which, all of which has been forwarded to the board for their review. So with that.
Wonderful. So with us is Rodney Weber, who is the principal of the project, and project manager Tim Barsaka do have comments that you'd like to make, either of you?
Hi, good morning, everybody, and thank you for your time. Rodney Weber speaking. Yes, it was just as far as it hit us right when we were starting the project. Of course, it was right during the middle of the pandemic. So that definitely set us back due to, well, basically people having to or couldn't work as well as a supply chain issue. And then, of course, expenses went a little higher than expected, so to speak. However, we are on track now. And so that was the major part of our delay. And then on top of that, Docuware, who is the main commercial tenant, who will be occupying the 20,000 square feet, just started their renovations just a couple of months ago. So they got a little bit further to go before, you know, before they end their side of the project.
Wonderful. Anything other? Any questions from the group at this point? I was wondering whether, what, whether you could give us a broad idea of whether Docuware was requiring any additional facilities that you hadn't planned on constructing at the outset?
No, Docuware, it's all, they're pretty much set in stone from the beginning of how many square feet they were going to actually need. They just weren't able to start there. Obviously, the, you know, COVID affected them as well, as well as the supply chain and their contractor, who is going to begin their job. Because we're not building it for them. They have, that's been subcontracted to somebody else besides us. So no, they're on track with exactly what they're going forward to build and the amount of employees they're going to be bringing into the neighborhood.
Fantastic. So as Sarah mentioned, you had, at the public hearing and written comments, three people who are commenting. And one was the city of Beacon administrator, who brought out several parcels. I'd just like to spend a minute for the rest of the board kind of reviewing the comments and the situation, the items that were brought up during those comments. So understood that in first case, the parcel was fairly difficult to work with since it was previously a highway garage for the city and resulted in the need for the construction of underground parking. And that the site actually kind of aligns with, this is reading from the city administrator's text with the trail system, the public access trail system going through that area, pretty positives. But and then with regard to the jobs, it sounds certainly with Docuware that you are having fairly well-paid employees going in there. The, there are questions, a question about sort of the basis of approval as far as, you know, the way, the process that the board undergoes to make approvals for these additional requests. And it would seem fairly clear, what is clear, that from the analysis, had this additional amount been included in the original analysis, we would have come to the same conclusion. So that, that value component doesn't change. And that we are committed to economic development and the public benefit that is derived from that. So that seems to be a part of the logical process of the IDA. And, excuse me, one second. I may have actual notes there. Didn't that something? So the, we've spoken principally about the jobs, the clawback provisions are interesting because you have a relationship between sort of the quality of the jobs and the rate of pay, where, you know, in the past, we certainly had applicants who have a high number of jobs with relatively low-paid jobs. And here, fewer jobs with relatively higher pay. Nevertheless, we still have the clawback provisions. But it does seem consistent with the goals of economic development, the goals of the county, the goals of the state. So I think that, I don't know if there are any other items that I haven't covered to the comments, but.
Yeah, another item is that this was a city-owned parcel that was off the tax rolls. And what Mr. Weber has done in that whole little corridor along the creek, he's taken an old salvage yard and enhanced it and bringing good, solid, working people to Beacon to sustain Main Street and continue its vibrance.
Excellent, thank you, Jen.
We also, during the, obviously during the development and it being an old DPW site, there was quite a bit of cleanup that we did. And so we mitigated the soils. But we also found voids underneath the site that weren't expected. So we had to go deeper and larger there in order to sustain the height of the building. But also, a good thing to point out too is not only is Docuware going to be providing these jobs, but they're already becoming a community player as far as starting a program, which is a shared program with students abroad. So they're taking so many students from Beacon schools and putting them into German schools for a couple of months. And then, and vice versa. So they're very much pushing towards, you know, being a community player. And even, even a couple of their, the couple of students from, or I think one to date, but another going into training has gone from the Beacon High School directly into Docuware to work and is doing very well with their, with their job with Docuware.
Interesting, interesting project. So are there any other questions or comments? If not, would one of you like to make a motion? And second, to?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that motion, please, Don Sagliano.
Thank you, Don. And all in favor, you take the roll, Jasmine, please?
Al Tua-Johnny.
Approved.
Don Sagliano.
Approved.
Jamie Piccone.
Approved.
Amy Bondeary.
Approved.
Kathy Bauer.
Approved.
Mark Doyle.
Approved. Thank you.
I can't thank you enough for your time and thank you for your support.
Thank you for the project.
Have a great day, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Very good. So carry on, Sarah.
So next on the agenda is Asahi Shuza. So we're going to ask Al, we're going to put you in a waiting room. And then when we're done with the topic, we'll bring you back into the meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
So in this case, we are considering the extending the completion date for the termination of sales tax exemption. Seems that this is logical, considering what the last two years. Anybody have any questions?
So we have Kate Roberts here. She's the counsel for the project. If the board does have any questions, but like you said, Mark Chairman, this is just an extension of the time. There is no change in benefit.
But it would be a great time to update us on where you're at with the project. And thank you, Kate.
Yeah, hi, everyone. Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to speak. So a brief update, I think as you, most of you probably recall, I don't know if everybody was there back November of 2020 and earlier in 2020, but Asahi Shuza had paused construction of the site for a while. And then construction recommenced. And the progress of the construction is going great. So there's three buildings at play with the Saki Brewery project. There's the main brewery building. There's the wastewater, wastewater treatment facility. And there's the rice polishing building. All of them are currently under construction. Actually, the main brewery building and rice polishing building are expected to be complete by Consigli, the contractor, in June of 2022. And then the wastewater treatment plant shortly thereafter, at the end of September of this year. Thereafter, Asahi Shuza needs to perform some minor internal construction, part of which involves the installation of specific equipment to be imported from Japan. That has to do with the rice polishing component of the Saki brewing process. This internal work is expected to be complete by October 31st of 2022. Hopefully with, you know, the brewery being open to the public sometime at the end of the year. I think they do need to run a few test batches of the Saki before they can open it up to the public. But we request an extension to the end of 2022, December 31st, just in excess of caution, so we don't have to come back to your board. But Asahi Shuza is fairly confident all construction will be done at the end of October. And they are very excited about getting everything up and running. I'm happy to answer.
Yeah, Don Sagliano, you look like you had a question.
Yeah, yes, I do. Thank you, Acting Chair Doyle. So my main question is, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
I can hear you.
My main question is, Ms. Roberts just described the existing aspect of where the project is. And, you know, saying that, you know, the construction's going to be, you know, pretty much 100% complete by October. Is only leaving two months to the end of December for fit-out, equipment installation and stuff. Is, is that really, is that going to be enough time rather than, you know, having you guys to have to come back? Because we know with shipping delays, especially if there's stuff coming overseas and customs and duty and all that good stuff for the final fit-out, I don't see, I'm suggesting that perhaps maybe you push it off to the end of March so that in the, you know, absence of having to come back here in November, December to say, oh, well, we're waiting, we had delay, who knows? I just think that it may be prudent to push it off at least another three months if that is something that the applicant is interested in.
Thank you, Don. It's something that I definitely think we appreciate you saying. And like you said, I think Asahi Shuza has every intent to move this project forward along as quickly as possible. So, you know, they've told me that they think October 31st for sure. But I don't think it hurts, like you said, in the excess of caution. So I appreciate that. And if the board is open to it, that would be wonderful.
Well, Acting Chairman Doyle, I'd like to make an amendment to the resolution to extend the sales tax completion date from December 31st, 2022 to March 31st of 2023. I think it's prudent in this era of logistic and supply chain delays and stuff. And I think it would just be more beneficial to the applicant that they have that buffer for any unforeseen issues as we move through summer and final construction completion. Counsel, where would we have to make that amendment within the resolution?
You're making a motion.
Can we make, get a second to a motion and just get the?
Sure. I just want to make sure that once we do that, that we place it in the proper section, counsel.
Do we have a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Jamie, thank you. So.
Vote on the motion, that's all, counsel.
Well, I think we can have discussion before we vote.
There's a discussion, I don't know.
Well, I just want to make sure that we place it in the appropriate section within the draft resolution. So counsel wants to direct where we would have to make that amendment. That would be acceptable, what page or which.
So there's a, the final whereas clause on page two references the December 31st, 2022 completion date. And in the resolution on page three, section one, there's a reference to December 31st, 2022. That would be changed to March 30, 2023. There's a third reference to December 31st, 2022, but it's referencing the application, or the letter request by the applicant. So that reference would remain because that was the date. That was the letter.
All right. So that is manageable within the timeframe? All right. Any other questions on the motion? So we'll take a vote on that motion and move on to, I think Amy had questions as well. Jasmine, would you, we'll do it via roll call.
Don Sagliano.
Approved.
Jamie Piccone.
Approved.
Amy Bondeary.
Approved.
Kathy Bauer.
Approved.
Mark Doyle.
Approved. Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Don. Amy, it looked like, do I have it right? You had a question? You had your hand raised?
No, I don't have a question. Sorry about that.
All right. Anyone else? And can?
Vote on the president.
Yes, I know, exactly. Right. So we're going to then look for a motion to vote on the amended resolution. If somebody would like to make that motion.
I'll make that motion, please, Chairman.
Thank you, Don Sagliano.
I'll second.
Jamie, seconding it. All in favor, Jasmine, will you take the?
Don Sagliano.
Approved.
Jamie Piccone.
Approved.
Amy Bondeary.
Approved.
Kathy Bauer.
Approved.
Mark Doyle.
Approved. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it. Have a good morning.
Looking forward to visiting.
Yes, we're looking forward to having everybody to have some Saki soon. Bye.
Thank you. All right. Great. So the next item is a consideration, approval of the, of a preliminary resolution for the One Duchess Phase Three in the town of Poughkeepsie. Sarah, if you'd like to lead off.
So One Duchess. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Before we do that, Amy has a conflict. So we're going to move Amy to the waiting room and we're going to bring Al back. So I see Al, and then so. Okay, all right. So One Duchess is a market-rate mixed-use development composed of commercial space and rental apartments on the former Dutton Lumber Yard property in the town of Poughkeepsie. Part of the project is, about two-thirds of the project sits in the city of Poughkeepsie. One-third sits in the town of Poughkeepsie. The Phase One and Phase Two are in the city. And then this is Phase Three. The board is considering the project entailed the cleanup of a former brownfield site and construction of a connecting walkway bike path, which connects part of the county's rail trail to the walkway over the Hudson, both which were paid and developed by the owners of the property, of the project. They are requesting sales and mortgage tax exemptions for the construction of Phase Three due to a rise in interest rates and the rise in construction costs since the project was first planned out back in several years ago. They expect to create four FTEs with this phase of the project. They did receive sales and mortgage tax benefits through the city of Poughkeepsie for the city portion of the project. And they are receiving property tax abatements through the city, on the city portion, through the city's 485A tax abatement program. The, they are not asking for a pilot or any property tax abatements from the town portion. We have this morning Lauren O'Neil, counsel of the project, to answer any questions the board may have and to fill any details that I've may missed.
Yeah, so thank you for that introduction. Thank you, everyone, for your time this morning. I really appreciate it. Can everyone hear me? I just want to make sure.
Yes, fine, thank you.
Great. I have a PowerPoint. I'm not sure if I can share my screen. Otherwise, I can just give a quick, brief overview. Sarah covered it really well. So I don't know that there's much more I need to say. The property is located on the Hudson River. I'm not sure if others are familiar with it. So the two phases are done. We're, we stabilized pretty quickly and we've continued construction at a great speed, especially with everything going on. The project, as Sarah mentioned, includes an integral part of the walkway along the Hudson River. That was, this particular part includes 1,400 linear feet of that public walking trail and esplanade. We, again, as Sarah said, we use our own investment to renovate that and rehabilitate, and also rehabilitate the brownfield. The project is in close proximity to a lot of employment centers, including Marist, Basser, the Basser Medical Center, IBM and different government offices. And this particular phase is the last phase. And it's two four-story residential buildings consisting of 42 units each and then 4,000 square feet of commercial space in a separate building. Some of the benefits of this project include the 1,400 linear feet of public walking trail. It's environmentally friendly in multiple ways. Firstly, in construction, we're using all LED fixtures to reduce energy consumption. The shared walls and type of materials we're using for insulation reduce heating and cooling needs. Additionally, every unit has individual climate control. We're using high-end materials in order to reduce the likelihood of early deterioration to save waste. And then additionally, we have an incentive program for those who drive environmental, electric vehicles. So that's one option we have. But additionally, the project is walkable to the train station that runs the metro north as well as Amtrak lines. It's also close to the highways. The project's consistent with the town plan. And the town of Poughkeepsie has a pretty low vacancy rate at 1.2%. So there is a need for this kind of housing. We're here today because when, even as recent as Q4 2021, when we initially got our term sheet for our loans, the banks were using an underwriting interest rate of 3.6%. At that point, we actually had a buffer of $900,000 more we could have borrowed. But now the banks have, with the rise in interest rates as of this quarter, which is when we expect our commitment, the underwriting has changed to 4.5%, which causes a little over a million-dollar gap, a $1.5 million in gap. So our, the loan availability based on cash flow has dropped from 24 million to about 21.5. On top of that, I mean, as everyone's seeing, we've had 25 to 50% price increase in materials across the industry. We got a plumbing quote yesterday that for the same, same exact stuff we had done in other phases, we have buildings that are mirror images of this. It's looking like 50% has increased in plumbing materials. What's kind of nice about the sales tax abatement as well is that a lot of these vendors are locked into their prices once we do the initial bid out. So it really also benefits the local subcontractors and suppliers that we use because it allows them to mitigate the harm of the increase. That's really all I have to say. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Very good, thank you. The residential units are, so this is a statement and a question and wrapped up in one, I guess. And that is, for the residential units to comply with our process, they need to be rented units to meet the level of commercial requirement. So, and that's the case going forward for forever, basically, indefinitely? So, and that's the case going forward for forever, basically, indefinitely?
That's the case. That's the case for, there would be no way to condo out the units. And that's the case for the other two phases as well. So the way the property is structured is because we had to do it in phases because it was, banks felt at the time when we initially pursued this project that it was a risky endeavor. We had to do it in phases. So there are land condos, so each building is its own parcel, but there's 42 apartments, and each of those are all one part. It's complicated legal structure, but yes, there'll be rentals forever and ever.
That's true. Thank you. Does that, what you...
I think she thought there was more to your statement.
No, no. That's actually, that was the entirety of it. Don, I can see looking, no, he's not...
I don't have a question.
Okay. Well, so this is a preliminary resolution, and just the first in the phase, you'll be doing a public hearing.
So if the preliminary resolution is approved, we will hold a public hearing, and then they will come back at a future meeting for their final...
Correct. So can I get a motion for us to proceed?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Al?
I'll second it. Don Sagliano.
Don Sagliano, seconding. Jasmine, will you take the roll?
Kathy Bauer?
Approved.
Jamie Pecone?
Approved.
Don Sagliano?
Approved.
Al Tujani?
Approved.
Mark Doyle?
Approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Al. I appreciate your time, and I'll see you again soon.
Thank you. Very good. Okay, so the next item is the 2021 performance outcomes.
Yes, actually, we're gonna bring Amy back from the waiting room?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, all right.
I think you intended 2021.
Yes. So actually, I intended 2022. So the agenda says 2020, but it should've said first quarter 2022.
First quarter.
Yeah. It's a poor function of cut and paste.
Catch your own time.
Yeah. But just real quickly, I'm gonna start with the business attraction of first quarter. Is we received 13 requests for information, so inquiries from 13 unique companies looking to come to Duchess County. Of the 13, we did not respond to three of them due to either lack of space or lack of interest in the company. 10, we did respond to with information, and they're in various phases. We're still waiting for, most of them, we're still waiting for feedback from the company on whether the sites we submitted were of interest to them. One is actually moving forward and has been put in contact with the property owner. So, so since it's still fairly early on in the year, we have not attracted any of these companies, and therefore, we don't have any additional capital attracted or number jobs created. And first quarter of this year, we have not attended any trade shows. Related to that, we are in active search for a director of business attraction. So we have identified a shortlist of candidates, and we'll be doing interviews soon. So more news on that. In terms of business retention and expansion, we're right on target. First quarter, we've performed 13 site visits to our local businesses. We are doing very well in providing technical assistance to businesses. We do see actually an increase in people interested in starting their own business. And we don't know whether that is a function of, you know, people, you know, the great resignation that you've heard, and people are trying to now do something on their own. So we've had a lot of inquiries about starting business and business resources. And then as a function of that, referrals to our community partners have been high. We assisted one business to apply for their MWBE designation, which is the Minority Women's Business Enterprise designation through New York State. And we are in the planning process of producing our annual Business Excellence Awards, which will be in October, at the end of October of this year. So we're just starting that. We are doing a network breakfast on May 12th, Thursday, May 12th. What had happened was we had booked a speaker for the Business Excellence Awards for the fall of 2021, but as you may remember, we had to go virtual with that event. But because we had already committed to the speaker, we're gonna be holding a special business breakfast networking event where she will be the keynote speaker, and that will be at the Grandview. To entrepreneurship, we are now actually actively in the middle of the 60-hour entrepreneur training course. This is with the Women's Enterprise Development Center. They run our entrepreneur training course. So they are in the middle of that right now. They have hosted and 11 workshops in addition to that. And we are, another event that we are doing this year is a innovation showcase. The name is to, yet to be determined, but that is going to happen in September of this year. In terms of IDA so far, we have not closed on any projects in the first quarter this year. We actually had a closing in Arthur May in the second quarter, in April, so we have that. But none in the first quarter. And then the LDC, again, no closings on the LDC this year. I did receive a report on the marketing, which I'd like to share with the board. Real quick, it's not in your, it wasn't in your packet. But I'll go through real quick. We are in the process, the marketing committee, to come up with a formal matrix similar to what I had just presented. But real quick, I want to present the marketing for Q1. We've done very well in Q1. I'm not very good at using my finger pad here. Okay. So we've had a lot of proactive media relationships, pitching a lot of stories, a lot of digital highlights, and then so, real quick, so far, we've had five stories to earn media in first quarter, which equates to an ad equivalency of about $180,000, and very good impressions. These are the articles that we, it's a little tiny, so I apologize for that. But a lot of it is the Frito-Lay news announcement that was picked up. Also, I had done an article for the American City and County publication, so a lot of sharing on that. Hudson Valley Magazine and a lot of travel articles. This is the Frito-Lay, just some sample of one of the pickups for Frito-Lay. This is the American City and County. Hudson Valley Magazine talked about the academy, and then travel awaits. One of our companies, Unshattered, had a partnership, Unshattered is a company that helps transition women recovering from drug addiction, and they teach them different business skills in kind of forming their own company by manufacturing bags. And they do everything from, they start from like cutting out patterns to then actually doing a little business plan of how many of that model that they make, that they're gonna sell. They get a portion of the profits. The business also is closed one day a week so that the women can also get their rapid round services on that day. They are, this company is actually in the middle of expansion. They're right now located in Hopewell Junction. They will be moving soon to a larger facility. One of their things is they get all their materials donated. So Southwest Airlines actually donated old materials from their seats of their airplane, and they made a whole luggage, kind of carry-on luggage line. And so this is what this article was about, was the collaboration.
That's very interesting.
And then we're a top destination for National Beer Day, so... The social media, we're up first quarter on all our social media channels. We're doing well, you know. So we've seen an increase in all of these. I'm just moving very quickly. And that's about it. So doing well on our media so far. And then at the next quarter, we'll have a more formal matrix report on that. So that concludes my report.
You also have made several presentations and been busy on that front.
So yeah, so I've attended this quarter. I made a presentation at the Rhinebeck Chamber of Commerce. I also made a presentation, or I moderated a session on smart city growth with, through the International Economic Development Council. We were talking about the importance of walkable and transit-oriented development. And so yeah, so it's been busy three quarters, first quarter of 2022, so...
Yes. Okay. And, yeah, what we're just talking about, those presentations, you were working with the Housing Needs Assessment Group?
Yes, yes. So I've been working with the Housing Needs Assessment Group. I have asked, so the county was working, as you may recall, and Mark Doyle was sitting on the committee of, the county was taking a look at the housing needs of Duchess County for the past few years. The county has been doing a housing report since the 80s, looking at market rate housing. And the past several years, the report has shown a need, a dire need for market rate housing. So they decided to engage a consultant and do a deeper investigation and analysis of the housing needs of Duchess County. The county has just finished that report and has released it a few weeks ago. So there are recommendations that the IDA can assist on, and we'll be exploring that and possibly amending our UTEP to reflect some of the recommendations of the county. In the meantime, I have requested the county to come to the IDA, to an IDA board meeting and make a presentation on the housing report. So hopefully, the next or the following meeting, that we'll have somebody from the county to do that.
Perfect. Wonderful. So I think we can adjourn this section of the DC IDA meeting.